Called to order the December meeting, Westport County Council, and we will begin with our pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance. To the life of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sense it. Thank everyone for coming this evening, also for the ones who be doing it. Us tonight, most of what is tonight was kind of catch up on paper type thing, kind of in your things. So I'll begin with, uh, has everyone had a chance to read minutes?
Yes, I have.
Are there any additional corrections?
Nope.
I will, there's a motion on the floor, except for me.
Make a motion.
I second it.
On favor. Okay, next on the agenda, we are passing out our service contracts. And the first one is the Westport Water Club. We want to thank the Westport Water Club for all that they've done this year, and thank you for your service, what you've done. Yeah, there you go. Thank you for your work. Is anybody a representative of the building we did here? Oh, good. Want to thank you for your work and everything that's been done.
Thank you and weather of the year. Plans for hopefully things and things in the future.
Well, next year we definitely.
Thank you.
And lastly is the Westport Community Fire. Anybody here from the North Port?
I'll take that. No.
Having, um.
Didn't know what.
We'll get it too.
Yeah.
All right, Westport Water Project Updates.
Pictures this month are very exciting, but some exciting news. So the water plant, um, damage, if I'm wrong, I believe it went online at 1:00 P.M. today. So I'm supposed to go online Friday, a little bit of stuff over the weekend, but they're still working out the startup of, but, uh, treatment is needing all of the tests, all the samples passed, like J one did it to be. So as of 1:00 P.M. today, we planted online. Yeah, they are now starting to demolish the old building, the old plant, so that should be gone here soon. I think the guys have gotten everything out of it that they, that they need hopefully. Meaning we'll shut, as the county water argument shut off. Okay, so that'll help the other division of work, B, be able to proceed with what they're doing, which is the other piece of good news. The easement issue is settled, um, I believe. O'Meara is up there, it's selling pipe on County Road 950. Um, they met with, I believe they met with all the proprietors, everybody said super nice to them, um, so. Again, it's been wet, so there's been, you know, a little bit of, as expected, when you're digging holes. A little delays due to just the ground being wet, with ground conditions, but they're getting everything installed. As soon as probably tomorrow or the day after, they will work on making a connection with school and our main line over on State Road 3. So things are moving along actually pretty well. So, cross pressure figures, no, you know, it's construction, so stuff always tends to come up, but, uh, for now, we're moving along. I don't have any pay requests from the contractors this month. Um, we've been working pretty closely with the guys out at the plant, I think their next one will be their substantial completion one, basically saying, here's all the stuff we have completed, um, the most simple punch list and. Before the wrap up with that part of the project. I do have a change order for a fee amendment, um, this includes a time extension. And we scared, basically, this is all a clear well, um, I think we talked about this area, uh, to allow the operators to isolate either portion of storage clear well, so they don't have to take the whole plant offline if any repairs need to be done. One of those things that's just gonna really help operations in the future hopefully. Um, and then it also includes a spray foam, uh, instead of traditional insulation because. You can imagine traditional back insulation of water building. Is it, spray foam would be a much better option, so.
Ask a question, this, this can be asked out of my own hand. Would a dehumidifier help out there?
And there is a.
There is a.
And, and our, um, structural engineers reviewed it and they said, you know, it would work fine with the normal insulation. It's just the longevity of the plant, some, some type of spray foam with like a thermal barrier, they're gonna paint it with a thermal protective paint, so no moisture can get in, it's gonna last long. So. Because it is open, if you look up, it's open, there's no like, let's see.
A spray foam just goes on ceiling itself, not on choices or things or anything.
Uh, I think it's gonna cover the ones that support the roof, so it'll be up along the.
Sure.
Yeah, but it won't cover like the, the open wood, trust that go.
Uh, any timeframe on paving?
Um, paving, I talked to the contractor today, he's having some issues, they, they wanna wait till after the demolition, the old building is done, so they don't care the road. He said he's having some delays with the asphalt guy not wanting to come out before the end of the year and I said, we'll figure it out, let us know, because. Is what it is. If, uh.
What would happen? Ron, choice as to what would happen if the paving is delayed, they can't do it this month? How, when next time?
My guess is, uh, if that happens, we'd probably be looking at spring, because traditionally, and I don't know, asphalt places don't want to come out usually after Christmas, used to be after Thanksgiving, but this year they stay open all the way, they're just so busy. If the weather holds up nice, they may stay open longer. But what I've been told, at least from this contractor, is they plan to shut down. Can't get out here by then. And we might have to wait till next spring. This is something we need to discuss with the contractor, and actually, we have a construction meeting this Wednesday. And they've requested that this Wednesday will be the construction meeting, it'll also be what USDA is calling a substantial completion walkthrough, so they'll do a little walkthrough out of the plant, just make sure it's running, which. We'll probably want to schedule a follow-up meeting, I would say, when, when everybody can be here, so on Wednesday, that's great. Everybody, but, um, maybe it's the following week before, if, are you guys working next week? All the way through like Thursday, yeah, we can schedule a follow-up meeting sometime next week to discuss the outstanding items that we have, that would be. Kind of end of the project wrap-up stuff. Um, Division B is projecting to be done and will do their substantial completion stuff at the end of the year, because they still have to install meter at the glass factory, which shuts down.
The question I ask is leading up to this, extending that out to next spring, is that gonna be an addition?
That's something we have to ask them, and I would say no unless there's justification as to why it would cost the town more, that there's tired link.
Well, a question that, that. I understand, like, everything's going on. I was kind of curious about, because I went out there last week and looked at the plant.
Are you gonna vote on that?
Yeah.
Gonna vote.
I'm sorry, Simon. That was.
That's the change order. The change order.
Change order, make a motion.
Make a motion on the floor.
Make a motion.
I second.
On favor. Can't talk until you've been on the same.
Let's, um, let's bring that up on Wednesday, when we talk to contractors. I didn't done that yet. Item to point out. I believe it's at 1:00.
Tomorrow, I mean, Wednesday.
Yeah, alright, so, no. Okay, I'm sorry.
Um, the other thing I have on the water project is, I, I emailed this out also, um, now that the easements are done, it talks about having commonwealth had some expenses incurred to some of the easements and all of that, I believe we're tracking this, and, um, at some point, we'll sit down with Marc Shaw and go through the budget and see where all the contingencies lands, but I think Boris got a little list of question things, so I just need, this is Commonwealth, just the cost incurred for the easements.
You emailed them all out to us too, didn't you?
I emailed, it's the same thing I emailed, yeah. But just need your. Way of motion on that. And make the motion that we go forward with that.
On favor, bye.
I only have two, I have two more things and I'll try to get to it, because I know there's a lot. And last month, we talked about, on the wastewater side, I D M is requiring a stream, stream gauge calibration study. They technically require this every year, and, um, last year we skipped it, because I D M said that they would do it. So. This year, uh, it's the same contract we've seen in the past, I think I gave a view of property last month or two months ago. So it's just a task force to do that, and as soon as, as soon as this gets approved, we'll get it into I D M for your wastewater folks, and we'll get that taken care of, so. And then, my, my last update is, um, wastewater project, surveyors will be, you'll have a surveyor in town tomorrow, um, to set site control, which means he'll just be going around town, um, you'll probably see him out there, he'll have like, what does that's to be a Commonwealth van. Um, all he's doing is setting, getting, getting some control, so when they do survey, it'll all be tied together. Um, he won't be in people's backyards, he won't necessarily be on any private property, he'll probably be mostly just in the streets right away area. I will give him Damon's contact info, do you want him to check in here, give you a call, anything like that? He could probably be here early, I like to start early, as soon as it's light out, so.
Will it be like for a whole week or just certain days?
So far, I think he's gonna try to do it all tomorrow. When the surveyors come back to do all the survey, it'll be a little bit longer. But right now, he's just setting with this called control, so he's getting benchmarks and that type of thing. Probably just one day, um, he may come back if he needs to. Um. Oh, just a motion, and yeah, same as the others. Or.
The task order.
For the stream gauge calibration, yeah.
Make a motion if we take care of that too, since we have to.
Second, second, on favor.
And that was the one that will go away once the new wastewater improvements are done, so.
Stream may as well.
Yeah, we won't, we'll no longer, you'll no longer have to do the stream gauge calibration. A minor. Uh, the rest of the field work, wastewater project, manual inspections, that type of thing, we are hoping to start off in beginning of January. So we'll wait till after, after holidays, we don't bother everybody, um, tromping around town and then hopefully get started early, unless we get like a bad storm. Hopefully we'll be able to start them and get, make some progress. I think that's all.
On wastewater?
Yeah, on the wastewater.
Certain questions from the.
Just on a stormwater, the wastewater thing, after them. The A R P committee, they're trying to get the stormwater study, she'll fund it, I'm giving up, so.
Oh, that's good, I mean, his brains were good.
Yeah, so, they have.
We've got preliminary, yes, but it's not, okay.
That would be a grant from the county's A R P committee directly.
Rachel, I have one question related to the stormwater, and correct me if I'm wrong, as I understand, we were removing sledge out of the ponds, is that?
At the wastewater plant.
Right. And I was talking to Mark, and I think, when was the last time we checked, was that? The sledging on?
Uh, it was done.
2011 project?
2011?
Yeah, and there was, uh, rising way, small amount.
Yeah, it was a small.
We're gonna use that for like, everything cleaned out.
I was just wondering, given that, uh, are you gonna check that before?
Yeah.
The amount before that you, that you would even consider removing?
Yeah. It is, that is one of those.
I just have more information about the wastewater project regarding our rate studies and all of that. I just don't wanna move on before I read that.
Real quick, I'll just, just for everybody benefit, when our surveyors come to town to do the survey, what they're going to be doing is going to be just seeing manholes in town. They're also gonna go to the wastewater plant, but, um, as far as what you'll probably see, there'll be like one or two Commonwealth vehicles, and then probably two to four peoples at the manhole, so, um, so, some, some of these manholes might be in people's backyards, hopefully as they are, you know, they will knock on your door first, and, and they're trying to make contact before they're gonna be on your property. Um, if you don't answer and it, they see the manhole and it's in like easement, they'll go ahead and go to it, if it's in your backyard, it's expensive, so. Those have to make contact later, so. Get access to it. They're going to be.
You got to sign, I'm sorry.
They're, they're going to survey in the, the top of the manhole, and we'll have some survey equipment, and then they'll actually open the manhole, look in and do a, some of them they'll do an inspection on, other ones they'll just look in and make sure there's no issues, close the back. We'll see them hooking around in January. And I will, when I know the exact date, and if I know what part of the tunnel I'll be in, I'll try to. There's gonna be somebody to call. That, that's important. They should, like I said, they should be wearing Commonwealth clothes. It was, you know, like their connective jacket.
Don't check those. Anything else? If not, check those out, sign, rest in peace. Better back home.
Well, thank you. I'll stick around here when you're updated.
So for the wastewater project, we are working with L W, L W G CPAs, and Jim Higgins is our contact there, and he is working to finalize a rate study, and he sent me this memo. He said they should have a final draft of the study to present at the January 10th, 22 council meeting, along with a rate ordinance to introduce. Then at the February 14th council meeting, we would hold a public hearing and adopt the rate ordinance. After the adoption, the town will need to publish a notice of adoption and a 20-day objection period, what we need to pass for the rates to be completely adopted. And then, we're also working, along with that rate adjustment, we're working on interim financing with Indiana Bond Bank, and there, the bond bank is preparing to release their schedule for the USDA Rural Development and their Financing Program for 2022. Early indication is that the bond bank will require a rate increase completely adopted before they close on interim financing. So that would put us being, we would not be able to get our interim financing until March 16th of 22. Um, he's asked that they would fund prior to running of the 20-day objection period, that he's thinking that's a long shot, so just to be safe, we will need to have our application for interim funding in before February 2nd of 2022, so by the end of January, we've got that, got to have that ready to go, and he thinks that if we get all that done, we'll be eligible for the interim financing by February 16th, which is crucial that we get that into place, because we're talking 30,000 to 40,000 a month that we're gonna be financing for the field work. So we need to get that going, and probably by the end of January, Commonwealth is gonna need their first payment. Now, we do have, we have enough finances to run for six months without any revenue coming in. So I, I feel that we can afford to pay a couple of months before we get this set up, but we do need to stay on top of it and move as fast as we can with Indiana Bond Bank.
The interim financing will be pre-processed, the process.
Yeah. But. But we'll be looking to pass that ordinance by February, it looks like, for the rate, so.
So, is there more? That's Mandy, you're up. And she's with, uh, Decatur County Solid Waste.
Yeah, I'm the executive director, my name's Mandy Creach, with Decatur County Recycling District. So late last week, I got some concerning news, um, Best Buy decided to no longer man our. Yeah, our, yeah, our facilities, there's the one in St. Paul and one here in Westport. Um, after taking a poll with one member, they think it's very, very important that we continue to keep both Westport and St. Paul open. The only problem with that is I strongly suggest you find someone to man it, it's gonna have to be a county employee, that's not saying I won't support it, and we've had this discussion, right? I'm absolutely gonna continue to pay for them to service it, Mark Fixmer has told me that he will continue to service it, they just can't man them anymore.
Oh, you say that has to be a county employee to man it?
Yeah, I can't pay, I can't, I can't pay for that. That's not to say, that's not to say that I can't find some grant money to give to the town. If I'm going to, it's not, right, okay, so the district that I came from.
Right.
The one that has seven counties or eight centers, whatever, okay, and that's what, that's what they do, they give a stipend or a grant back to the counties in which there are employees, so they don't, they don't pay those employees, so it would be not possible for the district to figure taxes and all that and cut a check for whatever employee would be manning that site, so it's open nine hours a week right now. And not to say you guys can change that, do whatever you wanted, um, but right now, it's open nine hours a week. When I talked to Mr. Fixmer, he said going rate would be like $15 an hour, so that's close to $7,020, $7,020 a year. Problem with just having somebody kind of open the gate, if you do that, they're gonna dump, they're gonna dump all kinds of stuff, and what that's gonna do is drive the price of taking care of that facility way up, um, which is why Best Buy is the one. It's just expensive for them right now, but, said, I and my board, the ones I pulled, have very much supported this, and, and you and I had this discussion. We knew this might be coming, um, like I said, there was a rumor going around that they were gonna close it down, but in every rumor, there's always a true, sadly. Um, so we had had this discussion, trying to be prepared, um, I didn't see the St. Paul thing, so I need to reach out to their town council and see where they're at on that. The bad thing about it all is it comes after budget, right, so we haven't budgeted for a person, you haven't, the county hasn't budgeted for a person at there, so. That's, that's the biggest issue.
So does it have to be a Decatur County employee or a local municipal employee?
I would say local municipal would be fine.
We just represent West County, so I would have.
Yeah, yeah, and, and that's what I'm gonna suggest to St. Paul as well, is that they find somebody, like I said, it's only nine hours a week. $15 an hour, that's like $135 a week, it's not, it's not, it's not a lot, and $7,020 a year. So it's not a huge scope we're talking about, and like I said, I can go to my board and suggest to my board that we at least somehow help you with that cost.
Could we do, and this is off the top head, open suggestions, can we, could we hire, if we knew the funding was gonna be there, can we hire somebody as a town employee, just part-time, just specifically to do this, and then get reimbursed by her?
At least partially, I'm, I'm not sure that we can fully reimburse, but at least. I mean, really, all you need is somebody to monitor the site so that people aren't dumping and doing things they shouldn't be doing. Right, just to make sure not.
How, how much, how much reimbursement are you talking though, because none of that is budgeted for next year?
I have.
So we're talking almost $10,000 we need to come up with in the budget.
Right.
So. Are you saying like 50% could be reimbursed?
No, I'd have to deal that with my board, and like I said, this just happened late last week.
This is the way I'm on that board, this is the way we will probably do it. We need to know, and I know Jerome's reached out to me from St. Paul, we need to know what they plan on doing also.
Right.
As far as the board paying this person to do that, uh, it is recycling, that's what we are.
Right.
So I guarantee you that would be, if not completely reimbursed, it would be mostly reimbursed as a minimum. Saving my, my.
Uh, I know Aaron, Aaron reimburses a third of Jennings County and a couple other counties that we work with, as they are.
And you have seven to reimburse, so.
Town employees are, right.
Right, so what I'm saying is, I think we could probably do a little better than, if there beans were just one area instead of seven counties.
Well.
You know, there's, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I know exactly what you're saying.
So, um.
But I can't promise anything standing here, because that's a, that's a board decision.
No, I understand.
But I'm not, and I'm not talking for it before the board, I'm talking. I, when we discussed this, I promised you that we didn't wanna, we, we don't wanna get rid of recycling in Westport, it's, or in St. Paul. And when I spoke to my board members, that, the four that I pulled, I didn't call them all, I just called the majority, the ones that I knew that, that would work with me. And they were all in favor of not closing this down, absolutely not.
If I get this straight, Mandy, we just take care of the remaining part of it, and they will still take it down.
They'll do everything they were doing.
Okay, our cash is collected, that will go to the people who's paid it up, or what, where does that, where that go?
I'm still gonna pay them to pick it up, um, when Mark, when Mark Fixmer and I talked about this earlier today, he said it, it would go to the town, he said the town, and that's why I can't be involved in it, that's why the district can't be involved in it, because there's cash changing hands, and we're not set up for that at all, in any way, shape or form, so he said something about, um, we start them off with a bank, right, we hand them a bank bag that has so many ones, fives, tens in it, and they manage that, and then they give it back to you at the end of the day.
So, so potentially, I don't know, you have any ideas?
That opens up a whole can of.
I know, plus the fact we don't know how much money that, that they make out there, I don't know that anyone.
Right, and the.
Well, that's why they said they're closing them, is because, or they're not manning them any longer, because they're losing money. Either way, I'm still paying for the service, and we're still gonna pay for the service, period, because it's important. It, it just is, it's important to have that facility there. The only question is manning it, how we're gonna man it and how we're gonna fund that.
And we have to know by January 1st?
Uh, he wiggled on that a little bit, we might have a little bit more time than January 1st.
He gave you a definite, how much?
No, he didn't.
Because it would help to understand exactly, to have your board meet and kind of understand.
Right, we don't meet again until the end of January, um, so. I am assuming that he's gonna allow me, or that he's going to continue to man that until I have a definite solution, that's what he seemed to. be on board with when I spoke to him. So that was late last week, and then I talked to him again this morning, asking him just, you know, what, what would it look like? What's the, what's that model look like when you have someone run that? Like I said, it's nine hours a week, it's not like it's any full-time job.
Now, tell me something, Mandy, and I've not said anything like this to you before. But the man that was out there was actually a.
Best Buy employee. And this is the other thing I need to ask.
So he didn't work for the camp, he worked for Best.
He worked for Best Buy, and Best Buy's pulling.
Well, I'm sure that he was being paid more than fifteen dollars.
I don't know, that's what Mark, that's, that's the figure.
Wow.
That's the figure Mark gave me.
Okay.
Because I asked, I said, what's the going rate for something like that? What's it look like? He said usually it's somebody retired, you, you know, they come out there and hang out. What, you're open Wednesday and Saturday, seven thirty noon.
My thought is maybe Greg would be a possibility for something like that. We may have to look at hours, but I know I personally like it being open on Saturday.
Right, so then, then I suggest that when you find someone, you work with them and you figure out what it is they're willing to do. And change your hours to reflect that, just let me know so that I can advertise.
Right.
Right, just keep me in the loop. Um, like I said, I know that the board is completely in support of leaving both the St. Paul and the Westport locations open. We don't want to do. So Best Buy's not in support of it.
Mandy and I had, well, last time was October, when you were outside here. She kind of gave me hints after this is gonna be happening, and.
Well, that it could be.
It could be.
When I was out shopping about it, people worried about it was gonna be closed down, and I told Mandy at the time that Westport would do the best we can and looked at all the options and everything to try to figure this out, so we at least keep going two days a week. But, I mean, even if I gotta volunteer to go out there for a while, gonna get back to this money part. Collecting two dollars a bag, and, and he always charges, Matt Berry's, what he, you know, one dumpster by the, report bodies that we throw refuge in, like old carpeting and wood and all that, he charges a little bit different for that too, depending on how much you got.
Do you own that site, who owns that site? Because Mark said he, okay, okay, then we don't have to worry about rental, rental, okay, okay.
It'll just be a loss of revenue because we usually get rent from them.
From them, yes.
I know, but I don't know, well, one thing we don't know is how much that he collects per day. It would offset what the wages would be.
Obviously, less than two hundred bags a month, because I calculated it, and they would have to, they'd have to dispose of at least two hundred bags a month to just pay the payroll for that employee.
And that's, that's why.
Because I talked to Mark about.
Yeah, that's why they're pulling their manpower. But remember too, not only can you change the schedule. We can change when they come and pick it up. I mean, and I'm paying for that anyway. So we're, we're, we're in control of that, so we can change all of that to meet our needs. If we're finding out that it's costing us all this money for them to come, however many times it is they're coming, we can change that. We can tell them, no, we're gonna have you pick up this day and this there, this is when we want you to pick up. We can, we can control that. Right, so that's gonna change, that's gonna affect how much money it's gonna cost as well. But that's on me, that's my dime, that's not yours.
Well, I mean.
Well, that's not true either, you're taxpayers, it is all your dimes, it is all your dimes, I hate to say that.
And we talked about it, and I committed the board, the town, where we will try to work at every option, and try to keep it open to the best of our ability, because it is our property. And then at the time, Mandy said, they, their part would be that they would be rid, rid of it. Kind of half-half, we'll work it out, we'll figure out something.
No, no, I'm committed, I'm committed to helping y'all keep this up.
We really probably need to table it till February so that Lori can get a little bit more of an information, we can look at the budgeting. Another thing, having a bank bag out there and, and money out.
Yeah, I, I realize that.
And I want you guys to know too that D C S W is not the landfill. It's, it's not the same people.
No, no, it's just.
Okay, because I think a lot of times people think that Best Buy owns this.
They do, I kept a lot of every single phone call I received this year, I have an entire spiral notebook full. All I'm doing, I shouldn't say all I'm doing, but I would say sixty percent of my time is spent fielding customer service questions for Best Buy.
And we think Best Buy.
We, yes, we do.
To get it all.
We're supposed to be.
So I'd like to get Gloria more information on that, then we'll take a look at what the shared cost would be, maybe what we would benefit from the profit or whatever.
Call me with what parameters you need, okay?
Number?
Well, what they're gonna pay for.
And then we can.
Is there any questions?
Well, and then I can go to my board in January.
We did that, did we not? Instead of using Best Buy, we, we looked at so different things instead of using Best Buy here. He just wanted to know.
We had tentatively talked about, and I don't think, we didn't carry it all the way, but we were gonna look at, like, at the recycling, other things. Out that you said at curbside, and, oh, is there another company beside Best Buy that could provide service to Westport? And we did preliminary start.
We've, Damon's done a little research, I had done some research, like on cost of trucks and stuff like that. We had looked at like, what would it take, what would it take for the town to take over that as a trash utility? You would get like a monthly bill with your water, and it'd have a trash, and have town pickup and all that. But it, it is a bit of a process to go through all that.
It is, and if you don't have a large group of people to pay for this. You need a big town in order for that to ever happen, you don't see that in small towns. Because if, you, you can't charge somebody a hundred dollars to just pick up their trash.
It kind of, it depends on the.
They won't come unless you.
Well, it depends on the company, because what you do is you just present to the trash companies that you're gonna provide a contract with one company. And so it becomes a competition, and the companies submit their bids on who wants to provide that service, and then you divvy it up. Myland, some of the other small hopes, some of them around here do do their own internal trash. So I mean, it's very possible with it being a small town even, but it's just a bit of a process, because you gotta get them bidding to get the cheapest bid and all that.
Yeah. What we're going to do, a lot is that we're gonna leave a no-student and term type of thing. Is there a better way to do the processes that we were doing, and that's what we did in the future? And then I pulled with this came up, and the phone rang up about it, people worried about it. And I committed, Mandy, we'll work something out, not sure how we'll do it, but we need, John said more facts and figures and, and how much the grant would be to do that. Kind of work out some things and see what's possible. I think it's feasible to do, I just don't know how to quite do it right now. But, I mean, it does provide service, I. At the times that I've been out there, I don't know, is anybody in here using? See, does anybody else go out there and dump the trash?
Very seldom.
Very seldom, and that's, gets to be the problem, but then the people who vote about it are out there all the time, and then we get some people that don't live in Westport, that have a court with Michael Stable out there. And then I've seen some contractors dump some stuff out there as well.
And, and some, some of that you're gonna find, because you're one of the last counties that don't charge. Electronics, all the shredding, these free, these free services that you give. Doesn't exist, it doesn't exist other places, guys. You're one of the very last counties to not charge people with their electronics and hazardous waste, you know? So feel, feel fortunate that you do have, you do have a great recycling district that, that tries to very much take care of you. And I don't wanna see any of your services be pulled. And then Joyce sitting on that board feels exactly the same way, and like I said, I hold several of my other board members, and they felt the same way that this was a valuable service, and that we need to make sure that it stayed in place. So I'm gonna do what I can.
Any questions for Mandy? You got one? I didn't know you got that, but you got that.
I just say, I appreciate it. I, you know, it, it's just a bad situation.
Yeah.
A hard situation.
Well, I mean, it, it, it's, that's what everyone, everybody's watching the bottom line, funding, they're doing this, they're doing that. I really would hate to see, like I said, I, I feel very proud of the fact that this county doesn't charge for anything. Because that's just non-existent, I mean, they're twenty bucks a TV. That's just the way it is, and we are still not charging.
I see, and then you will start seeing all that on the roadside, on our back roads, all that stuff.
Yeah, there's, there, there is a learning curve, and I will start charging now.
Do you think we should start charging?
No, but I'm just saying, if, if, if that's cool, if we stop all that, you know, and everything.
That's exactly right, and that's what people are gonna do, dump. And we've got enough of that in our rural counties, that's it, we don't need, we don't need that to care now.
And that's, and that's what Mandy and I discussed about, that's exactly what will happen. People get creative, now we start dumping.
And like I said, this was just, when we first had our conversation, this was a rumor. So the person that normally manes your site was on medical, and someone else was filling in. And this other person filling in started telling people that they were gonna close the, the site. And I got so many phone calls, and when I went and asked, that was what I was told was, oh, no, 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 we're not gonna do that. And then when, when we had our conversation, he and I were both like, you know, when someone, somebody starts a rumor like that, there's always a little piece of there's always a little piece of truth, and so I wasn't shocked when he came and told me that they were not gonna man them anymore. But I didn't, I didn't even think about St. Paul.
Yeah, Barb, did you have something to ask me?
Have I seen them? I think I did, that's how far it's been. I'm so glad you got them, because I don't think any of those, I don't think any of those other cats are turning into benches anytime soon. She, and then I knew she might give you a hard one, but that's, that's not a program that's working out. And I, I hate to say, I mean, I hate to see that, but when you don't have somebody working, being cooperative and working with you, what else are you gonna do? And they're the only game in town. The, the only other place that does anything is that Polycore in northern Indiana. And they recycle on-site, but they don't take material from the public. So they're buying it from somebody like Aaron, the district I used to work for, because they do source separate recycling. So every single one of their centers, except for Jennings, has bins that you have to put your ones and twos in different places, in your aluminum cans, in your steel cans, and the whole the whole shebang, but they've got room to store all that. And, and we don't even have a facility, so that wouldn't be something that would be feasible, and you're not getting any. Recycling's just like any other market, right? Right now, they're not getting anything. They've gotta find somebody, they work with a broker, they have to find someone to come and get that stuff. They won't take it unless you have a semi of it. Where are we gonna store all that, right? It becomes a huge logistical issue, so. As of right now, just making sure that we keep our centers open is the important, is the important thing for twenty twenty-two. Right, let's keep it going.
Thank you, Mandy.
Thanks, anybody?
Mandy will have you back when, when we figure it out.
Yeah, just tell me whatever you need, and I'll help you get numbers, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mandy.
You're welcome.
I mean, as Mandy pointed out, what's going on nowadays, we got so much recyclable waste, and there's so much blood in it. They don't wanna deal with it anymore because they're not making any money with it. So that's part of the reason, I think, Mandy, they were pulling out of this.
Yes.
They don't wanna handle this recycling anymore, which is too much of it.
Right, when he came and talked to me late last week, he said there was so much of it that they, it's just piles up, piles up.
And they're getting so big, they're getting so big that these little places like us in St. Paul is just on the back corner.
Right.
They're buying, they're gonna buy big trucks, and they're gonna.
Right.
Pay wages to go out there and pick up that tote, because that's where they make their money.
Right, y'all are so very important to me, and I'm gonna make sure I take care of you.
We'll, we'll work that, get some figures. Okay, next on the agenda is, or somebody here, I don't see anybody, moving a transfer again. Yeah, the story behind that was.
Oh. She called me.
Amy calling us.
Yeah, but you do too, she, you know that too.
Yeah, I know, but, anyway, I talked to Amy Cunningham. There, and her husband's supposed to be here tonight. At the gate out there, if we go into recycling center, she was asking if we would move that back, and the reason we were allowed to be moved back, the reasoning behind that was, is the bridge that they have going into their property is such a state that it's not safe to travel on. And she looked at the cost of, they looked at the cost of replacing that bridge. It stands right now, the fire department has to stay on the road, and then the hoses they gotta pull all the way back to their house. So, because it's, it's, it's not safe. So what they were looking, the Cunningham's was looking into, asking the property owners near there to allow them to take a driveway from their property all the way across to where the road is, it goes into the recycling center. And there was supposed to be somebody here tonight, and.
Should we just table it until somebody shows up?
Yeah, just, I mean.
Because we don't know what their plans are for.
For to put a bridge in where their, their driveway crosses the creek. So their people that live next to them said that they could use the little strip of, and most of it's their land anyway. But their land goes all the way back to the recycle center, and they just wanted to put a road that, that comes out of Washington Street. But they would have to use, for the address, they would have to use the same street that goes into the recycle center. Just move our gate back, so they're asking, so they can have their driveway to come on out.
Way far back there.
No, 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 they can build the road, their drive all the way up, and then just kind of like this. You'd have to see the pictures I saw of it, but it, it's very simple, and it would involve nothing except move, moving our gate back about ten foot. And. Really? How far is it from the, how far is it from the road now?
One minute.
Well, I mean, it's only ten fifty feet off the road now.
Right.
But where it would come across a people's property, it's three hundred feet down that road.
Their property goes back to that road on that end.
Because they would be using dump road as the driveway.
They've got the permission from the people that they have to cross.
Because that setbacks probably two acres back.
Let's table it. Well, let's table it until we get the paperwork, okay? Right.
It's not ten feet back to paper set now.
But they want to bring their driveway up the side and then come out the end of the driveway to keep their address right. I have no idea what that means, but that's what they told me. They need to come and show you their.
Oh, okay.
Okay, next on the agenda, excuse me, is Brown settlement resolution twenty twenty-one minus seven. And I sense it's so short. What it is, oh shoot.
That's just the agreement. For information.
Resolutions in the front.
Yeah, just, just down on the front is what you would be.
Where it is, what it is, is to finish up there on nine fifty. Uh, one of the property owners to settle that issue of wanting to process property and that's what this rest mission agreement is. And, um, it says, whereas the town of Westport and William D. Brown, Kathy L. Brown, executed a settlement agreement dated December the sixth, twenty twenty-one, would compromise and otherwise settle any and all disputes existing and potentially existing between the parties relating to the grant of permanent water main, non-exclusive easements and temporary water main, non-exclusive easements to Westport on properties of real estate now owned by William D. Brown and Kathy L. Brown. Now therefore be resolved with the Westport County Council of the Town of Westport, Indiana, ratifies the settlement agreement dated December the sixth, twenty twenty-one between the town of Westport and William D. Brown and Kathy L. Brown. Executive copy of the settlement agreement is attached here to the terms of same agreement incorporated with. And also.
Yes.
And I think they, 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 when I was up there, they were like, can, uh, turn going toward the school, did they get that on there?
It's all the way down around the corner now. The two escalators have made it to the, they've made it to four twenty already.
Did they? Okay, now that's Joe, this, we've done. You're here.
Joe.
We got the next police car bids. I think that's the next thing on there. Um, got three bids from Akron-Greensburg. Um, family over in North Vernon and then Fletcher in Franklin. Out of the three bids, uh, family in North Vernon came in the lowest at fifty-one, three sixty-four thirteen. Um, and that includes the upfitting for the lights, the cern package, everything else that goes inside, eight hundred radio and everything. So, um, we, we would be going with family over in North Vernon based on the calls, so.
Okay. I don't think we really had a preference.
No.
Oh, there was no preference.
Yeah. Need to make a motion for that.
Make the motion that we go ahead with that.
Second.
Second.
On favor. Okay, next on the agenda is the town marshal and deputy marshal contracts.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to catch up. Okay. Just go over and you sign it and Joe signs it. Shane would typically sign it because he's not here tonight. So I guess we'll just sign our part and I'll get, I'll catch him later. Um, yeah, that you want to continue having them. Um, it's a contract. They, the police officers are on a yearly contract. Do we need to do a vote for it or is it good for them just to review the kind, contract and sign it or?
Um, yeah, we'll go ahead and, and you're talking about town marshal.
Yes. Okay.
About time.
Yes, sir.
Right, second.
Second.
On favor.
What's going on here?
I'm not signing.
I didn't sign.
No, I'm just.
We never seen you and that's a good thing. Things are doing well.
Pretty neat. What'd you get that?
What are they better from? They have that on a, on a grant.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so we'll probably budget for one sometime soon.
It's neat. I said there's smoke, you can go through there, slam on the brakes.
Oh, yeah.
Others I've seen, why not, we, uh, on our.
Yeah.
At least you know what they're going down.
I knew what they were doing anyway.
Yeah.
The speed, but I don't know how much.
Good part of it is, uh, the new modern, mid-date is the new modern electronics that we have. Yeah, there you go.
They've visualized a plate and.
Yeah.
They can, they can, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. We mentioned for this.
Yeah, we would. I make a motion.
I second it.
On favor. You know, I, I think Alex, I was going through our town ordinances in nineteen eighty. They passed an ordinance. Talked to some people, it was on the town council app, everybody understands what happened or why or anything. No, no, they, they voted for five.
We're still at three.
Oh, council members.
And, uh, is that still valid? That's been back nineteen eighty. We can't find anything. Well, I know that, but I mean, but then what got me was one of the guys that didn't, was on the town council back then, he didn't live in Westport. I'm not sure.
Well, I think we're, I think we're scheduled for maybe just five, four, five next, uh, next town council.
Yeah, I just, I thought, man, nineteen eighty's, they can still valid.
Well, they're not fair.
They're not?
You know, no.
Oh, okay. I was kinda curious about that. We got ordinances and uh, in an easier format to look at when I was going through that. So I went over and talked about Cunningham.
He saved it and I think about.
Alex, do you need to sign with?
Okay, next on the agenda, wage and salary ordinance twenty twenty-one dash nine. Okay. I will read through all of this. It's, it's our ordinance establishing salary and compensation for employees and elected officers for the next year. Back to January the first twenty twenty-one.
We made our budget for that and I, we all have agreed to it, so I will make the motion, we pass that.
On second, second, on favor. Okay, next, there's no water leak.
Mary, I have a, a special situation where um, one of the individuals that lives over in the apartments at Millstone, um, had a mysterious leak and couldn't figure out what it is. All of those bills are consistent. And then all of a sudden in November, we had this huge leak and then they changed the meter and the usage went back down. So we don't know if the old meter went bad. Um, he had his maintenance man check the toilets and all of that and they couldn't find any leaks. And his next bill went back down to normal consumption. And because they changed meters, we couldn't go back and test the old meter. So it falls outside of our ordinance that says we can give a leak adjustment. So it would be an, an adjustment, he would get a credit of seventy-four eighty-nine if we ran it like a leak adjustment. And we're just asking permission to do that.
Yeah, me too. I mean, kinda strange that change of meter goes back.
They can, they go bad.
Yeah, of course they could.
Usually it's to the, yeah, it's to their benefit.
Right.
The refiller there will actually make the water. And maintenance didn't find a leak. It's hard to believe that the meter wasn't issued. Whenever, when they used to go, except if your meter quit working, it's one of them. So it's gonna be your business.
That they changed the meter. Right. So you can't tell if the, the meter had went bad. Oh, I see. Oh.
Yeah, meters do go bad, but they go bad in your favor, not ours. If they just couldn't find a leak, it's very odd.
So we're, what, what would be your assumption?
Oh, I know, I don't care what.
No, I know, but I, is your, is your can you tell me what, why you would think that somebody's might do that? That they use it and didn't?
There'd be a lot of water to use.
That would be a lot.
Yeah, I don't. Especially with consistency before and after.
Yeah. It's strange. The only thing we could think of is maybe the toilet stuck, maybe a handle stuck or something. Yeah. And they said they checked all of that and, and his bill went back down. So it's just really strange.
Well.
Sleepovers. Free showers. We already did it.
Favor. Okay, next on the agenda is a certification.
Once a year I have to submit certification that I am not, um, participating in any nepotism as far as hiring and supervision. So this is my statement. I posted it up on the board over there. Uh, it's just a state requirement and it basically says that I understand, um, that I will not hire or supervise any relatives, which includes my spouse, parents, step-parent, child, step-child, brother, sister, step-brother, step-sister, niece, nephew, aunt, uncle, daughter-in-law, son-in-law, including half-breds, bloods and adopted children. And I'm submitting that for the twenty twenty-two calendar year. I hereby verify under the penalty of perjury that the foregoing statements are true. And I just sign it. So thank you.
Now we'll open it up to the general public. You don't want any more, yeah, I can say, I'm gonna say your big name. Write down names here.
Do we have any little squirrels running around that are bothering things that you need to know about?
I have about forty in my backyard, but they don't bother.
You better know what I'm talking about.
That's why I put cameras up. That has to be alone.
Well, I'm happy. We're not having issues. We really aren't. But I've seen some shadows.
This is firsthand I've heard about it, of course.
Because they don't think you're, you what? What?
I said we love you. Keep going.
Okay. But I just, just in the east, you know, I don't know what they're going through. Pretty late at night.
It's like six thirty.
Yeah, well, I have to say. Anyway, no, but I, I was just wondering if there was anything that we need to, do we need to wait back to the lights on or? I haven't seen any since Friday or second shift.
Maybe up there. Motion lights are always helpful.
Motion lights are the, the thing to do now. They're not expensive.
Hi, this is first I've heard about. Probably not heard in town. Somebody got bit by a dog.
My guinea was killed in the pen. It was her, not his. It was the, the little girl, the female. Something got in the pen. They tore a hole in it. And I found her carcass laying in the pen. Or a feral cat. There's a feral cat around here that'll kill big cats. It's got a big old black head, but that big.
Yeah, anyway, moving along.
But anyway, yeah, that.
Yeah, I was gonna bring Joe's attention, so I, I hadn't heard anything about that.
Well, I was just wondering.
I mean, there's, there's people like. So sometimes, uh, most, extra, two chairs. Alrighty.
Connie's got some little bit.
Sitting next to you. Well, I, I thought we wanted to keep it light this evening since it's Christmas time and a new year coming up. We got a brand new year ahead of us and and the challenges ahead of us next year. Seems like there's so much going on in the world right now. There's always something going on, so we're trying to work through that. Yes, go ahead.
Issues with the warehouses, you know. I was thinking about it. I'm retired. I don't do that anyway. You know. Have the people contact me on Friday for help like they have bronchos.
Yeah, and that's, I appreciate you offering that sound to we, we're looking and we'll look into. I know it needs to be revamped, but we've heard small whole stories again.
Come on, I don't have nothing else to do. You know, I, I mix anything, you know, but.
But would you wanna work out at the landfill?
I'm not.
You wanna say I did?
He did. I have PTSD. You really don't want me around a bunch of people that could be a buffalo. Cause Joe would have to show up with handcuffs and a chalk. Oh, I would raise so much cane with him, but he would do something, just give me to shut up.
Well, and the bad thing is, is we don't, we hear when people come in, we hear that they don't like the idea of having an ordinance and they don't, you know, but we're only hearing from the land, the landlords. But there's so many people out there that say to me anyway, and I'm sure they have to them, you need to do something about these landlords. So there's as many of them or more of them.
Give them people my number. Have them call me. I would, I would ride them for the help like it ain't no.
That's what it might take.
That is.
That's what it takes to get this problem fixed without prosecuting the ones that do do good for their properties. I'm willing to do that.
And we're not in it to make anybody, we just wanna, we just want them to be responsible for their property.
He can tell you, I can be one of the biggest assholes you've ever met in your life.
I know that.
There's certain places people should not have to live. There's certain places people should not have to live in, you know, and I
You've always treated me just fine.
And that's, and that's what we're hoping, and trying to you guys keep the drainless, there's some people that do, but then there's a group of people that
I can hear him now.
I, I thought, well, I don't, I don't go to landlord, you know, I haven't come and seen me, just tell him, hey, if his white Ford's in his driveway, knock on his doors, his dog will go nuts, and tell him what's going on in an aisle.
Maybe we found our inspector.
Yeah.
Yes, dear, dear Morris.
Yeah, we may.
Yes, okay, two, three things. Are, are you willing to go with CPS in the same way?
Yeah.
Are you sure?
Oh, yeah.
Are you sure? Because that goes to Indianapolis, that don't just stay in
Sure, I make sure my own brother stayed in prison for child molestation, so, yeah.
Well
I'm a police officer at times, that hat.
Damn, what happened with the rental free? Nurse's bothered me at the nurse's home, and I didn't get in on that last little bit of the last meeting, so what's transparent?
We're still working on
Inspector, is something?
We gotta develop a checklist, we gotta get checklist going, we've got to determine how, if we're gonna inspect, and what I'd like to do early next year is I'd like to invite people in, uh, landlords and, and people in public alike.
Right.
Um, the, the people that gotta live next door to these houses. Um, and have a discussion on how to get one that's appropriate that everybody can settle on. But
Well, you know, I'm not being, I'm, I'm not trying to be mean or anything like that, but like I told you said before, I've worked in the school system for thirty years. And I, I turned in a lot of stuff to, to teachers and to principals and CPS, and nothing was ever done. And those people will always throw it up in Indianapolis.
Oh, no, see, I, I, no, no, see, I, I'm the butthole that would be bucking on their door every morning. You know, don't get me wrong, I grew, I grew up third floor. You know. Yeah, for our
And that's, and that's, that's something we'll work on, we're gonna work on that.
You know, when it comes to kids, I, I don't care.
If, you know, and, and with, same thing with the Department of Health, you turn in stuff up there, and they'll just say, you keep, and, and I'm, I'm, I'm serious, they said this one time. You people need to set up your own Department of Health down there, we have enough
No, that's why you're, that's why the taxpayers of Eager County pay.
Well, you can throw that back out of all you have. Let me know how you just handle all that.
She don't know me at all, does she, Joe?
That's, anyway, that's something I want to take up and really look for this next year.
Like I said, I'm more willing to do that, I'll raise, I don't care, I'll raise hell all day, every day. That it takes to get the stuff for the bad houses that people are living in, swallowed, fixed.
Yeah, and we appreciate that, but I want to wish you a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and everybody, everybody that's out there.
They just want me to go away.
I promise, I promised my wife, she said, I'll let you get home deep, so I thought, well, you know, you know how
I still don't understand how you got such a very young lady as ugly as you are, I just, I just don't get it.
I got lucky.
Stop this, man.
You got something.
All right.
It's on record here, where people are watching at home.
Anyway, all right, we wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And, uh, thank you for the town employees and the work that they've done, and, uh, girls here in the office and all that, the, I, the Christmas decorations, everything's marvelous. Makes a cheerier atmosphere for anybody coming down here, but stay appreciate Damon, the work that you've done on, uh, water plan, and I think we've had a, probably a record number of burns this year, haven't we, as well? Uh, that's what I call, they've been busy, I'm digging at the cemetery and lawn mowing and weather and everything, so town employees that are here, I want to thank them for the work, Joe, thank you for your work. And sharing things with me, and Joe and I have had discussions on things, talk about different things, I appreciate that, so, thank you. Tell Shane thank you too, but with that, I will entertain a motion that we
Make a motion.
I'm second.